All right, so we are now recording and welcome to the July 28th, 2020 School Board Meeting. First order of business is to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you'll join me in reciting that, that would be great.
Hold on a sec, hold on.
Okay.
Mark. I gotta get the flag.
Mark.
I gotta get the flag. Got it?
Got it? Nice. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, thank you everyone for being here. And I know it's hard to come in out of the beautiful afternoon, but I appreciate everyone's attendance. First item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as written or to modify it.
I would move to adopt the agenda as attached.
Okay, it's been moved to adopt the agenda as written. All in favor say aye.
Right.
Opposed? All right, the agenda is adopted.
Oh, there I see Kong is on. Great.
Excuse me. All right, the next item is public comment. During this time, we're conduct during the time we're conducting our meetings via video conferencing, we're accepting public comment through a portal on our district website or through email. Any comments received prior to the board meeting will be read aloud at the meeting. Any comments that come in via the chat feature during the board meeting tonight will be reviewed and addressed after the meeting. We have two public comments, so I will read both of those. First one is from Peggy Upiano, Upiano, I think I said that right. I've asked the school representatives twice whether the board's Zoom meetings could please be recorded and made available to a public. Both times I was told they would check into it and get back to me, but so far nothing. A benefit of online meetings is that they should be easily recordable. A recording is superior to written minutes in that no communication gets omitted. Please explain why this is not being done since it would greatly benefit those who cannot attend the meetings. Thank you. And we normally don't comment on public comment at the time that we read these, but we did want to just comment tonight and say that, and when we reached out, I think Linda, you reached out to Peggy. But the meetings are recorded and they are available online and they can be assessed accessed through the district website. We've been recording them all this period, so all the meetings are there. And then we have a comment from an anonymous parent. Please consider bringing special education students in for both the AA and BB schedule so they don't fall farther behind. At high school, that would look like special ed students attending classes on AA days and being in the resource room on the BB days with special ed support to get their work done. Thank you. You can also find written answers to the community questions we receive during the month of July under the public comment section on board docs. All right, the next item is the Masonic Award. And so we want to celebrate our 2020 Masonic Teacher of the Year. And to announce this year's winner, I will call on Dr. Quinn.
Thank you, President McLaren. I, I, our Masonic Award awardeers chose not to be on the Zoom tonight. They really wanted to give this award in person. So we're having a little ceremony at 11 o'clock tomorrow. It's going to meet all the guidelines, which means that only the awardee and her family and the, and, and I and the, and the Mason who's giving award can be there. But since I can't invite you to all of those, I'm going to announce the winner tonight and read a tribute to Lori Bianco. It's my great honor to announce that the 2020 Masonic Teacher of the Year is Lori Bianco, who teaches music at Skyline Elementary. Lori's been employed by the Ferndale School District since 2006 and she earned her National Board Certification in 2008. She spent all 14 years teaching at Skyline. And for a few of the years, she also traveled to Eagle Ridge for part of her day. Among her many notable accomplishments, she composed the school songs for both Skyline and Eagle Ridge that are still in use today. Skyline's Principal Obadiah DeWeber, who's a former web music teacher himself, attest that Lori is an exceptionally gifted music teacher with a gentle, natural way that makes kids love music coming to her classes. He says, I've watched students who struggle in other areas absolutely excel in music under her direction. Lori's passion for music is contagious and her students shine with confidence in music performance, performances. She makes learning joyous. Lori is also an advocate for music education in our area and across the state. Frequently asked to be a guest speaker, a guest presenter at Regional Music Education Conference. It is not surprising that this past fall, she was selected by the San Juan region as their 2020 Music Educator of the Year. The award letter read, "In recognition of the outstanding work you do every day in bringing music to life for students, as an outstanding music educator in the region and indeed throughout the state, you have garnered the respect not only of your students, but also of your colleagues. Thank you for your dedication, pursuit of excellence, and belief in the value of music education. Every day you make a dis make a difference that inspires others. While Lori's first love as an educator is teaching music to children, she is also dedicated to the betterment of the profession for all teachers. To this end, she's played a critical leadership role in the Ferndale Education Association, serving for several years as Chair of FBA's Bargaining Team. In this position, her intelligence, grace, sense of fairness, and ability to see various sides of an issue have contributed to strong agreements between the district and the association." According to fellow teacher Amy Nyland, Lori Bianco is one of those rare people who could perform at the highest level at any career she chose. She's an outstanding athlete, musician, leader, and businesswoman. She's been blessed with exceptional talent that she maximizes with exceptional work ethic. Ferndale cannot measure its good fortune that Lori Bianco actively chooses teaching and she chooses to do it here. She brings her whole heart to their classroom and inspires her students to do the same. For all of these reasons, I'm thrilled that Lori Bianco has been named the 2020 Masonic Teacher of the Year. So, so whenever you get to see Lori again, and we'll make sure we publish that.
Well, great. Thanks. And thank you, Lori. Congratulations. We are certainly, certainly lucky to have you working with us and staying in Ferndale. So, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Business of the Year Award. And again, I'll turn it over to Dr. Quinn.
Hey, and we have on the screen tonight, we have Shy Tan. Your brother's not with us tonight, Shy?
Nope, sorry, my brother Lee couldn't join us.
Okay, well, I'm just as thrilled to announce that Coconut Kennies and owners Shy and Lee Tan have been selected as Ferndale School District's 2019-2020 Business of the Year. Each summer, the district honors a business that has made outstanding contributions to Ferndale schools during the past year. This longstanding recognition is a way to show our appreciation for the positive impacts community businesses and organizations have on students and schools. We are deeply grateful to many local businesses for their support. However, this past year, the contribution of the Tans stood out as exceptional. This Business of the Year Award is a testament to the positive impact Coconut Kennies has had on our schools, our teachers, and our children. Coconut Kennies first approached the Ferndale High School Leadership Team about a year ago with a partnership idea. They volunteered to become the official sponsor of concessions at our sporting events, offering deeply discounted pizza for students to sell at games. Essentially, they donated their pizza, thereby creating an avenue for students to raise more ASP funds to support their clubs and activities. In addition, Shy and Lee had tickets printed for all of our home events with their logo and a coupon on the back. During contests, they held drawings to give away pizzas to fans. These drawings became especially popular at basketball games where the winner of the drawing also got a chance to try to make a basket from half court. If the lucky fan made the shot, they received free Coconut Kennies pizza for a year. These half court shots, always entertaining, were videotaped and promoted on Coconut Kennies Facebook page. And there were several winners throughout the season. Shy and Lee Tan write in their Coconut Kennies mission statement, "We strive and work relentlessly every day to become the leading restaurant employer and business partner of choice everywhere we have the pleasure of conducting business." I can attest that they have been excellent partners with the, our school district in many ways. They have shown up at our events, they have stepped in to lend a hand when one was needed, and they have helped to tell the positive stories of the Ferndale School District. The connection between Ferndale Schools and the Tans is personal. Both Shy and Lee are graduates of FHS, which makes this award even more special. They are successful products of our school district who are choosing to give back. They are wonderful examples of the kind of community leaders we hope all our students will become. Shy and Lee, I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. On behalf of the school board, the district staff, and the children and youth of Ferndale, this community is blessed to have you in it. Thank you. And, and if you'd like to say a few words, you can. We actually have a trophy that we will deliver to you. And normally we would all shake your hand, so we'll just have to give you a thumbs up.
No, that's, that's fine. Totally understand. Thank you for, thanks for having us and on behalf of Lee and, and not just my brother, but the whole entire Coconut Kenny staff, we're really, really thankful for the, the recognition. You know, we have the pleasure of doing business in, in multiple communities and we're not partial to any of them. We do live in Ferndale and, and we love it here and, um, you know, it's, again, we're not partial to any, any school district or any community and we try to be a part of, of as many things as we can possibly be a part of. To be recognized for this award though, is a testament to the Ferndale School District. I don't know how the voting happens or if it's parent involved or just, you know, staff involvement, but you know, throughout the year, we hear customers come in and say, hey, thanks for, you know, supporting our school district. So it just shows us that you guys are at least letting people know what we're doing and what we're a part of. Being a big sponsor for the athletics program and the ASV program throughout the sports seasons were a lot of fun and, and we know this upcoming year is going to be a little bit different, but you know, anything that we can be a part of and, and, and help and contribute to, we're going to continue to do it because at the end of the day, you know, without school district and our community, you know, we can't be successful either. So we're just thrilled to receive this award and thrilled to be a part of it all. And thank you all very much for recognizing us for that. So.
Thank you, Shy. And as part of your award, you don't have to stay for this whole board meeting. You can go enjoy the evening.
Sitting in my front yard and I told my wife, don't let the kids outside until I'm done with the meeting. So, yeah, I probably.
Yes, we will, we will not take offense. It wouldn't, it would, it would might diminish the award if you had to stay here for the whole thing.
Oh, well, again, just really appreciate the recognition and really just letting us be a part of everything that you guys do. So, and you know, anything that we can do in this upcoming school year to help out, we're, we're, we're happy to be a part of it. So, thanks again.
Thanks, Shy.
And on behalf of the board, just thank you again for everything and congratulations on being our Business of the Year. It's one of my favorite places in Ferndale. And I think it's great that you're both graduates of FHAs, FHS. That's really great.
I'm sorry, Andrew, I'm sorry, but I don't know where that information came from, but I have to correct that because we're not.
Oh, you're not?
Oh, no, I don't know.
They're graduates.
Oh, Eric told me that.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Hopefully it doesn't change anything.
No, 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 no.
No, we, we do live in Ferndale though, so.
Okay.
All right, you're honorary graduates of Ferndale High.
Yep, we just made you honorary.
Just made you honorary.
Thank you. Well, we feel like we're more a part of the Ferndale community than any other community since we both lived here for, for a large percentage of our lives, so.
And regardless of that, you're, you're positive role models for our current students in so many ways. So congratulations on this much deserved award.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And maybe your kids will be graduates of Ferndale.
Yeah, for sure.
We'll take them.
Thank you.
All right, enjoy your night.
Thank you.
So the next item is the report on capital projects bond. It's a standing topic at all of our school board business meetings. So I'm going to turn the floor over to Mr. Dibok to bring us up to date on the bond related work that has gone on since we last met.
Yeah, so just a couple of highlights for the evening. If you've been driving around town at all, you've probably seen some work at some of the schools, particularly Skyline, going on in the secure vestibule projects are all underway. They were pouring the columns up there today. So you can actually see some tangible signs of work happening in the district. So that's pretty, pretty exciting. The other, the other one that I think you, the last time we met, we were in the process of finding a financial advisor to come onboard and help us with the bond pricing. So we have actually contracted Scott Bauer, who came recommended from Cynthia Weed from Bond Council. So he is onboard and will be side by side with us as we go through the, the process of selling the second round of bonds coming up here in August. This last week, we had our Moody's, Lynn and I participated in the Moody's Rating Call, which is a standard process before a bond sale. So the folks from Moody's, the analysts interview us, walk us through a series of questions and then recommend a rating to their committee. So we should find out Thursday what they're actually sending forward as a recommendation. The other, one of the other issues that has come up is, as you know, the Performing Arts Center down at the high school, the PAC is got $2 million budgeted for renovations and upgrades as part of the bond package. So in addition to the new construction at the high school, there was a separate component of the bond that set aside some money for upgrades and, and improvements to the pack. As part of that process, the architects and engineers have been going through and, and looking at the building and determining you know, the, the scope of the work and the cost estimates and that sort of thing. In that process, they raised some questions about the situation with the, with the seismic condition of the building. And so we were able to, to find the plans and the, and the documentation from the 2002 repairs that were done there at the PAC from the Nisqually earthquake. And they weren't quite as extensive as in terms of improving the structural integrity of the building that we had hoped they would be. So it focuses mostly on repair. So the recommendation from the structural folks right now is to actually put some investment into upgrading the seismic condition of that building. It's a fairly significant structural, structural cost in terms of the scope of the, if it's within the, within the project budget. But some of the other items may fall off, but they're a little smaller and more easily handled through an alternate method. So part of that process, CSG, our construction management company has recommended a independent review of the recommendation as well. So we're going to have a separate group look at the evaluation done by the seismic engineers to verify that their assessment is indeed accurate and we should move forward with those improvements. They assured us there's no immediate life safety danger. It's not as though the building is going to collapse or is in a, you know, a dangerous situation. It just is something that needs to be done. And if we're in there doing the work with, you know, capital money, it would make sense to do it at this point. Just because of the nature of the, of the work that needs to be done there. The other is pretty exciting. We are nearing the completion of the design development phase of the project. So early August, we should actually have some design drawings from the architects that will give us a pretty clear indication of what the, what the school is going to look at, look like, and, and some, some pretty good detail. And one of the, one of the things that is, has been asked by board members is specifically about Lummy Language Room and Native Leadership area of the building. And there is in fact a designated area in the building for Lummy Language and Leadership that will be part of the design that comes out of that process. And that's the bulk of, of what I've got.
By far the most, by far the most fun meeting I've gotten to participate in was the one where we talked about colors and signage. And I think there's going to be some opportunity, Jesse, that I'm going to want to talk to Ted Solomon or someone about some, some art around that area that we've got designated. And there's, it looks like there's a lovely wall that could be. So, but that's down the road a little bit.
So thanks, Mark. I just had a question or two. Going back to the financial advisor that we've hired, what will guide us to determine, I guess, whether or not this has been a successful venture? Because we haven't used one before. It's not an OSPI best practice, but we're, we're moving ahead with this on the recommendation of the bond oversight committee. But sort of what will be the markers that will tell us that it either is a worthwhile expense or we're fine continuing as we have been?
Sure. That, so part of the, part of, of the work that Mr. Bauer will be performing, in addition to participating in the movies call, the Moody's Call, reviewing the materials from Bond, Bond Council and our bankers. He will actually participate in the, in the pricing. He'll be there on the day of pricing and kind of go through the whole process side by side with the bankers. And then he will produce a written report. So he will actually write a report that he will submit to us that we will give to you. And he will actually, if you'd like, he can come and present it in person or via Zoom, I guess, depending on what situation we're at in August. And give you the information to basically say, you know, he'll deliver his work product.
Okay.
And you'll be able to make an evaluation at that point whether there was some value add or not.
Okay, that's great. I look forward to that. My other question, I don't want to just capitalize on this, but my other question has to do with the PAC projects that we're not going to be able to do. One of the things that we discussed kind of briefly at the bond oversight committee was that those items might lend themselves to asking some local businesses if they would like to, you know, purchase the sound system or buy new drapery or refinish the floor, the stage, that sort of thing. Can we get a list? Or I know there, there will be a list of what those things we can't do and, and how we might approach our community about helping out with those things.
Sure, that's a great idea. And the, the, so the list is, is still the list and that we're putting cost estimates. We, the engineers and the, and the consultants are putting cost estimates to each of the line items. So we'll be able to identify those things in the, in the cost associated with them. The one thing I would say that the curtain is actually very high up on the list because it's a, it's deemed a life safety issue because of the
Fire retard.
Fire retardant on the, on the curtain.
It's actually so old that it's no longer fire retarded.
Yeah, so it'll actually be funded as part of the, as part of the life safety work.
Great. Okay. Other questions on the board?
I have a comment.
Yes.
The guy that did the report a couple meetings ago on the building, we had a lot of questions. He had a lot of slides and all that. And I, and I asked about the room for
Right.
For the language, Lummy Language. And he said he talked to Matt, Matt Warbis.
He did.
And I talked to Matt afterwards and he said he never, he said as far as his conversation went, the guy that was talking that night talked to kids, kids talked to Matt Warbis. And that's as far as the conversation went. I just want it noted, that's what the conversation with Matt I had. So just so you know.
Okay.
Good. All right. Other questions?
Financial advisor, do we know what that is going to cost us? I mean, I do think it'll be a benefit, but also have to be aware of what that cost is.
It's going to be in the neighborhood of $6,000.
Thank you. And can I ask one more question?
Sure.
The seismic retrofits for the, the PAC, it was built in the early 90s, is that right?
70s.
74.
Okay, so seismic code then versus code now, or is this because of damage from Nisqually?
It's, it's code difference.
So this isn't something that like, yeah, okay, so code difference, bringing it up to code, smart thing.
The type of construction with the tall masonry walls, they, there's some pretty significant differences in, in our seismic standards versus when it was constructed.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Mark.
You're welcome.
So we'll move on to item 5.02, update on reopening of schools, which I know everyone's anxious to hear about.
Favorite topic.
Another regular item on our agendas this summer. So in any case, I'm going to turn it over to our two executive directors of teaching and learning, Kelly Lehrby and Dr. Fabrit, to give us an update on the district plans.
Thanks, Andrew. Since we've taught last, we've had quite a few task force meetings. And it's kind of interesting like to look back and appreciate how much we truly have accomplished in just three meetings between the last time we talked and, and now we have been working closely with, I think we have about 60, just over 60 people on the panel. Last week at the meeting, we had a representative from the Department of Health kind of share an update of where he thinks we are, you know, what they're stand, what they're working with within the community and also sharing conversations that have been happening with our Human Resources Executive Director and all of our work groups, union groups together to collaboratively kind of discuss what reopening might look like. We provided templates to realizing that the task force as a whole can't operate and do all the planning with 60 people in one Zoom. So we broke up into subgroups based upon areas of interest and expertise and where people felt they could contribute the most. And the last two meetings, the subgroups have predominantly worked together in, as, as subgroups to look at answering some of the essential questions that we had garnered out of the OSPI guidance, as well as things that we just knew that we needed to address as a district as we consider reopening. But then we also realized that the subgroups couldn't get their work done in just two hours once a week. So our facilitators of our subgroups have been gathering people from their groups together throughout the week in between task force meetings to continue answering those questions, to continue the work and what specific tasks and needs are that we need to address that, like I said, we just realized we can't do it in two hours a week. So that's kind of where we've come from and where we've been. Um, so that's kind of where we've come from and where we've been to. We spent part of the beginning of the task force meeting today with each subgroup giving a brief update on where they were with their planning and with their questioning. Um, and Kelly and I have specifically been working with the infrastructure group. Um, John has taken Mark have been working with the, um, maintenance facilities group and Linda with communication. And then we have another group with, um, social emotional learning. And, um, it's our last group, Kelly, my mind's just.
Transportation.
Transit.
And equity.
Equity and access. Thank you. Um, so I'll, I'll hand it over to Kelly and let her give you some, some more insights. But that's just kind of where we've kind of grown from and got to at this point.
And you just, you just came from a two hour meeting, right, of the task force?
We did.
You and, and Leanne and Melinda and Lynda, and Lynda Quinn, yes.
And John and Mark.
Oh, okay, everybody but Jesse and Kevin, so.
We are getting to spend.
Pretty much the rest of us.
Yeah.
We're getting to spend some quality time together this summer, getting to know each other. But, um, they reviewed quite a bit of it. We are um, getting closer, um, every week, every day, um, with having a plan. Right now, at least we have identified what our three models will be for the fall. And we are very, getting very close as a, as a team also to being able to announce what the content of that will look like in terms of instructional materials for staff and students. Um, and we're hoping to have that later this week or in early next week. We are also in the process of creating a, an, uh, Ferndale registration, um, process where families are signing up for the learning model that they would like their students to be placed in. So we are hoping to send that out at the beginning of next week to start asking families, um, what their preference will be for the return in the fall. So there's a lot going on and we continue to take every day. And, um, you know, we have these guidelines that we're using, these guiding principles and being creative and being resourceful and, um, involving stakeholders. And we continue to do that on an ongoing basis, um, and doing our best with this situation. So we definitely have appreciated the support of our community. We definitely are working really hard to become experts in areas that have not always been, um, what we've done in Ferndale. So for instance, right now, we're spending quite a bit of our time looking at what the distance options or models would be like because we're more comfortable in a classroom with students. Um, and that, that's what we're used to. So really trying to also make sure that our professional growth is in areas that, um, that are of need. And, um, just developing programs based on the revised statutory requirements for this fall. Um, Linda, do you have anything you want to add?
I do. Um, and we're continuing to plan, but, but I'm sure if you're watching the news, the preponderance of evidence is suggesting to me right now that we may not be able to, um, implement all three of the, our options right away in the fall. I spent, um, over an hour with the other six Watcom County superintendents today. Um, we're going to be meeting with the Health Department on Monday or Tuesday, whenever we can get an audience. Um, we do know that, um, we're watching the news as districts in King County and Pierce County. And then, um, I think today it was Mount Vernon and I've heard that tomorrow Everett, um, Edmonds, Muckeltoyo, a couple of the others are going to be announcing that they're going to be starting online or with distance. I shouldn't say online. So, um, I, we keep reminding ourselves that this, um, planning is not in vain because at some point we're going to be transitioning back into school. But with, um, as Kelly said, every day is a new day. And we have, um, made the decision that right, right now, uh, more of our emphasis is being spent on how to handle the remote learning. We know that the model we had in the spring is not good enough. And so we, we don't need to spend hours and hours planning how to teach kids when they're in person with us. We'll have to spend some time figuring out how to keep, do the distancing and all that. But if we get to have them in person, we know that, but we want to make sure that we've got a robust and, um, uh, on, online kind of options for our families as well. So it is a moving, I don't know if it's a target, but it's a, the situation evolves on a daily basis. Our, in our big broad thinking on Monday, the executive team thought about the fact that the first two weeks in August, we are going to get our administrators completely on board and hopefully know what we're doing. The second two weeks in August, we're hoping to spend time with our, all of our staff groups. So in training and whatever time we can get with them. And then we know whatever model we begin with in September, we're going to need to do some training and some orientation with families and students. Some of that may start in August as well, but we're chunking out big. They're not big chunks of time because we don't have a lot of time, but how we're, how we're going to manage this. We'd be happy to answer questions, probably be making up answers. No, I'm just kidding, but.
There's a lot of different opinions, obviously, and a lot of people who want to place blame somewhere or just argue. I'm looking for what can the community do to be the most supportive of the school district, the students, all of it at this time, and whether that's the community as a whole or parents or what can we do to stop the finger pointing and the yelling and the name-calling and the arguing and be helpful as much as possible in this stressful time?
Are you asked, is that a, a question you're asking us to answer?
Yeah.
Stop finger pointing. I mean, I, you know, um, keep, keep abreast of what we're, what, what we're, we're trying to communicate often and as much as we can. Um, stay tuned in. Uh, I, I guess one of the things I would want everyone to realize that no one wants kids back in school any more than we do. Um, and I think our teachers feel the same, although they're very worried about sa- health, health and safety. Um, you know, I'm, we're, what we're hoping for, I think, are some clear guidelines. We would, from, on what if we do have to, have to begin in a distance mode, what are the metrics that are going to let us start bringing kids back? If we do, if we start in person, what are those metrics that are, and, and maybe agree on what the conditions are? There's a, I understand people's frustration because a lot of the guidance is contradictory, I might even say, you know, that it's, it's, there's a lot of confusing things out there.
And I would just like to add to that, um, Melinda, is that right now, parents, um, are, are anxious about what the fall looks like and are looking and exploring so many different options because they want to do what's the best for their kiddos. And we completely understand that. And so I would just maybe ask and request that we are very, very close to coming to a point where we can announce what we are hoping to, what we will be offering. And what we are offering, we are trying to do by providing a lot of different flexible options to meet the needs of families. So we're, we're optimistic that our plans will include options, um, that, that the, that will meet the needs of families. So just as they are continuing to explore options before they're committing, just give us a, a couple days, even if, you know, by this time next week, we are hoping that this information will be out and then families will have the opportunity to, um, to register their kiddo in whatever program that might be. So just the continued reminder that we're really close and we know this is important and we understand and respect how important it is for your family. And we're doing our best also to provide them those opportunities, um, that you think and we think are important to meet their needs. So just continued encouragement that we're so close, but we understand it's important.
You know, I think to go along with that, um, for our community is to, to keep in mind that, you know, Ferndale is not unique in this. Every district in, in the nation is faced with the, these kind of questions. And we don't have the option to go rogue. It wouldn't be safe for the kids. It wouldn't be safe for the teachers. And we're dealing with the pandemic in, in a way that, that we think makes a lot of sense and to give families options. But you know, we've got people who, you know, don't want to be in school, all the way to where people who think kids should go back to school and not have any social distancing and, and shouldn't wear a mask. And, and we have to follow the guidelines. And so people need to be supportive of the fact that, you know, we're not in this to make a political statement. We're just following the guidelines that are given to us by our state governor, by our state legislatures, by our health department. And, and that's, I think, the best we can do is to follow that advice and proceed as we are. And that would be, I think, a great thing would be for folks to rise and, and support the schools. Even if we're not doing it the way that they think it would. I, we've got really smart people figuring this stuff out. And, and, and everyone is working really, really hard to make sure our kids come back to school. Whether it's on distance learning or in person, they, they come back into the, the Ferndale fold and get as, as good education as possible, given the circumstances that we face. So I'd love to see more support. And I think there is good support in, in pockets in our community. So I'm off my soapbox.
Well, and, and I'll just add that, um, the idea that school will be closed. It's the, again, we go back to the buildings may be closed or only partially utilized, but school will definitely be in session. And the meetings that I've been able to attend, um, the amount of effort and thought and care going into these decisions to provide that best education possible, considering our circumstances, is really, um, is really incredible. It's just incredible. And, um, I am, I am so proud of the work that's going on and it's not going to be perfect and we're going to make mistakes because none of us have done this before. But wow, the effort into it has been, I'm just amazing. So, um, thank you.
Our, our, our teachers and our administrators are working incredibly hard to provide for the students. And it's really impressive what everyone's doing.
And I think there's always that impression that, oh, it's summertime. So you guys have got the, you got the summer off, right? And I think this is probably the least summer off any of you have ever had. Um, it's just, you guys are really working above and beyond.
Yeah.
I will say though, we're really fortunate that we've had an incredibly supportive group of, of staff that are surrounding our, us. And that, I mean, the number of teachers and staff members that have joined us on these presentations to give us feedback or, um, just to be part of it has been so incredible. It just, it's been, we have really felt fortunate to be able to have that voice in this process and have that collaborative spirit. So, um, yes, there's been a lot, but it's been a very collaborative process that we have very much valued and appreciate.
Yeah, I couldn't, I could not agree more with that statement. Um, it just feels like people are reaching out and offering to support and to help. And what do you need? We can jump in and help you with that. Um, it, it's just been an amazing, um, collaborative experience and, um, just that we really are in this together and that we're all helping each other out and realizing that two or three or four of us can't do it alone. Um, and won't want to do it alone. So I'm really grateful for the support we've had.
If you haven't, um, seen the entire list, if you, one of the questions that we posted today said, who's on the task force? And you could see the entire list. I think there are sixty-two people and it's a pretty broad-based list. Um, of people who show up every Tuesday evening.
That's great.
Yeah, it is good.
Well, thank you, Kelly and, um, Fay for your hard work. You know, you guys are doing an amazing job and the board really appreciates the inclusive way that you're pulling all this together. And, and so, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll move on to item five oh, five point oh three, which is the report on the development of the twenty twenty-one budget. So to provide us with the next installment in that saga, I will call on Assistant Superintendent Ebo.
Thank you. Um, so we're getting close to the end of our installments on, uh, budget development. Um, so tonight is the, um, kind of the final before the official budget hearing. Um, so, um, what I would like to do, for those of you that are new, um, to the board, you're probably not as familiar with the, um, what we call the citizens budget. It is a, a more user-friendly graphical representation of the, the official, uh, budget, um, that is, we, we're required to provide it, produce it in a, in a a prescriptive state format called the F one ninety-five. And it's, um, not a very useful document. In terms of, of telling what's really happening or what's going on in the, in the district. So we created, years ago, we created this, um, citizens budget that's a little, little simpler. It's got graphs and charts that, that makes it, um, a little easier to understand and, and do some comparisons from year to year and see what's happening in the budget. So, um, I'm assuming that you all have not had a chance to review this since it was posted very late this afternoon on Board Doc. Now, we've been refining, um, right up till kind of the last, the last minute. When I sent it to Kelly Warner at, I don't know, three or, so she said, wow, you, you know, down to the wire. I said, oh, we've got hours to spare. But, um, it's kind of how it feels these days. Um, so I, I'm not going to go through this in, in great detail tonight, um, since you all haven't had a chance to, um, review it. I, I want to give you a chance to do that. So what I'm going to ask, I'm going to hit a couple of highlights, um, as you, uh, Bruce, that you'll, you may have, um, some questions that, some things that jump out. Um, but please, um, email me your questions. Um, as you go through the, through the document, I'll, I'll, I'll put together some answers and, and, um, give you the information, um, prior to the budget hearing, um, on the eighteenth. Um, like I said, this is on Board Docs. It will be posted on our website tomorrow, um, with, as, as so will an update to the, the F one ninety-five that is on there, um, as well, since it's, it's changed slightly. Um, we don't anticipate, um, making any additional changes to it at this point, um, the budget that is, unless, something comes up that, that you have concerns with that, that, um, that we find out, you know, that we discussed that we need to change, um, going forward. So we advertise, um, starting next week. Um, so again, for those of you that are, that are not as familiar with the process, we're legally required to run, um, two advertisements for the budget hearing for budget adoption, um, in two, uh, consecutive weeks prior to, um, the actual adoption and the last one delayed than seven days. So, um, we're basically running, um, an ad next week and an ad the week after. So once we run that ad, um, we really don't, uh, make any changes to the, um, to the budget. So that's kind of the, the process moving forward. Um, most of the things we have talked about, um, prior, um, so, um, I'm just going to hit a couple of, of, uh, revenue highlights, um, or potentially lowlights. So obviously the, the, the big changes are, uh, the loss of the levy. Um, so we've got half a year uh, worth of levy revenue, um, the, the second half of twenty twenty. We are not allowed to budget for, um, levy revenue if the voters have not authorized it. Um, so we are basically submitting a budget with half of the, of the levy revenue. Along with that comes a reduction in, um, local effort assistance, um, which is going down as the property values in Ferndale go up anyway. Um, because that's a levy equalization, um, based on the, the state tax rate. So in order to be eligible for, uh, the LEA funds, you actually have to have, um, the local funds, um, in your budget as well. So that's a, that's another reduction. 4122, the, the special education, the, we call it birth to two. That has been for years a pass-through. We receive the revenue and then we pay a partner agency basically to provide the services. The state, when they say, hey, you know what? That arrangement doesn't make a whole lot of sense. Let's just pay the people that are providing the service directly. So while that's a reduction in almost $700,000 in revenue, there is a corresponding reduction in expenditures that goes along with that. Transportation funding is, is going down as well and transportation lags a year. So we are in a position that we, we may be looking at several years of, of some deficits in transportation because the funding is based on the weighted average mile. So the number of kids that you have on a bus for the average mile that it drives. So if we're transporting fewer students or not transporting students, that is potentially going to have a significant impact on our transportation revenue as we move forward. And the indications from the state at this point is that there is not going to be a hold harmless and they are not looking to continue those expenditures as they did last year. So that is going to be an area that we potentially struggle in for several years.
Where is that listed?
4199.
Yeah.
It's what?
I think I passed it.
4199.
Oh, okay. Thanks. Okay.
Yeah, right down at the bottom here.
The transportation funds that we have, is that only for buses? That doesn't pay anything for operations?
So there's two, there's two. So there's 4199 and, uh, what's the other code? There's, so there's a separate, it's actually in a separate fund. So the operations money, this is operational cost, this is fuel, this is tires, it's, it's oil filters, it's the driver's hours, the wages, the actual operational expenses of, of transportation. The TVF, the Transportation Vehicle Fund, is limited to the purchase of equipment. So it's the, it's solely for the, the replacement of buses. So you'll hear us talk about the depreciation schedule. So when we purchase a bus, we start collecting revenue for that bus as long as it's on the, the state depreciation schedule. And that depending on the size of the bus, the, the class of the bus determines how long it's on that schedule. So we'll collect revenue on that bus as long as it remains on the schedule. Once it either gets too old or we get rid of the bus, we stop receiving revenue for it. The theory is then-
This budget we're looking at right now is just the general fund.
It's just the general fund. This is strictly operations. So the TVF fund is not, we cannot use that money for operations. So you can't take that money out of operations this year and say, hey, we're just going to borrow and, and goodbye year. It's not, it's not allowable. That's the, and that's a, a good question that comes up quite often too with the, the capital projects fund, right? Why can't you just take money out of capital projects and pay operations? It's illegal, right? We can't do that. So it's the, the way the state has set up the accounting system is you've got the separate, you've got a fund accounting system. And it talks a little bit about that, actually, at the beginning of this document. On the first couple of pages, there's a little bit of an explanation of what the different funds are and what's allowed to be expended from those different funds. But it prevents the, the kind of the robbing Peter to pay Paul. You can't take money away from one purpose and use it for another one. So it's a, it's a, it's a control measure that the state has in place. So the kind of the, the, the big highlights on, or lowlights again, on expenditures are, you know, basic ed is where the bulk of the, of the reduction is happening. And special education as well, which is, is unusual for us to actually have a significant reduction in, in special ed expenditures. It turns out we were staffing quite a bit, quite a bit. Our ratios, our staffing ratios in special ed were, were significantly higher than our local district, our surrounding districts. So we have actually made some shifts in, in staffing to bring those more in line with our neighbor, our neighboring districts and what they're providing in terms of staffing, supporting special ed. So that's, that's a definite unusual item to see in, you know, in our budget. So just a couple of highlights as, as you go through the budget. So look at it, review it, let me know what questions you have. And the final, kind of the question that I have that I would like some input on, if you can provide it tonight, great. If not, then I would appreciate your thoughts as, as you kind of review the budget and, and think of things. The F-195F, which is the four-year projection that we are now required to do. It's a new requirement and, and it has stirred up a fair amount of conversation over the, over the course of the last year. Prior to that, it was kind of a non, a non thing, but it hasn't been in place very long. So the, we've got two different versions. And it's actually, it's a much more involved document than this. It's actually a, a version of the F-195, but we simplified it down for, for terms of conversation. So we'll have that up on the, on the website as well. If we looked at the whole, the whole document. The top version is the four-year projection without levy. So it is basically the, the, the 2021 budget rolled forward with an increase of, of 1% in, in per year and in, in state revenues, 1.6% increase in, in expenditures, which is not atypical from, from what we see. But it does not include any levy revenue. So you can see that leaves us at the end of the, of a four-year, you know, 2021, 22, we all of a sudden, we're actually in the negative if we don't do anything to modify our expenditures further than where we are now. And by 23, 24, you end up with a fairly significant deficit. The bottom section, we actually forecast a passage of the, of the $1.50 levy. So while the 2021 budget, we are not allowed for our F-195 that we submit to the state, we cannot budget levy revenue if it hasn't been passed. The forecast, we are able to because it's a forecast. So we have included in 21, 22, moving forward, the $1.50 levy. And you can see what a, what an impact that has on the bottom line. So we assume the same assumptions for the, for the expenditures, but it adds the levy back in. So, you know, the deficit becomes dramatically different with the, with the passage of that levy. So the question to you all is, we have to pick one version. And it could be a different version as well, if you, if you'd like to forecast, project something different. Do you have a preference of, of which forecast or which theory of action we would actually submit with the F-195 to the state?
I have a question first before answering that. If the levy passes in November, I assume we're going to be adopting a, a new budget. And at that time, would we then file another four-year projection with it?
No. So the, the way, the way that would work is, is the state has a mechanism in place called the budget extension. So if, if, if we are going to increase expenditure, so the levy passes in November and we decide that, okay, we're going to spend more money than what we had actually budgeted in terms of what you adopt in November, or I'm sorry, in, in August. So the 18th, you were basically, we're asking you to set up, adopt the budget that allows $74 million worth of expenditures. So regardless of what happens in revenue, we could receive a grant from Warren Buffett that gives us $100 million.
That'd be nice.
We don't have to do anything in terms of a modification of the budget. If we want to spend more money than $74 million, then we have to file a budget extension. So it's, it's a mini version of the, of the budget process that we would go through. We'd actually file a, produce a resolution that we would submit to the state then that said, we would like to increase our appropriations in the general fund. So maybe is the answer. It depends, is, is always the answer, but that's the-
Always depends.
Yeah. So it depends on what we end up doing with expenditures. If we're going to exceed the 74 million, then yes, we would have to do, we would have to file a budget extension to get authorization to do that.
Mark, what is the, the significance of whether we submit one or the other? You know, since these are only projections, I mean, what, what are the implications if we submit the one with or the one without the levy?
It's, it's all just local conversation, right? The, the, the state isn't going to care one way or the other. There's no mandate one way or the other. It's just a matter of, of how we want to frame the conversation locally.
The first one, if you want to frame the conversation of what happens when you don't pass levies, let them have that and see that in their conversation. If we put that other one on there, then people are going to forget pretty quickly what happens when you don't pass a levy, in my opinion.
And I guess I would agree with Melinda. And I think the other piece is if you put the second one on there, there's going to be conversation about, well, they're, they're sure they're going to pass it. And I would say, I'm not. So I think the first one is, is reality in this moment.
So Mark, we're required to have a certain amount of funds in our, our fund balance, correct?
Correct.
Does, does this keep that amount in there? Or are we really just depleting it 100%? And then if we do that, what are the implications from the state if we have no fund balance?
Well, so what is depicted in, in, in the, the first scenario, we can't do, right? We can't submit a budget that looks like that. So when we get to 21, 22, we would have to make an additional, you know, $4.6 million cuts minimally in order to, to submit a balanced budget. So you can use up 100% of your fund balance, but you can't submit a budget that takes you into the negative. If, if, and if we did the, made the adjustments, submitted the budget and then actually had some cost overruns and ran into the negative, you end up in what is referred to as binding conditions. And that would basically create a, a situation where the ESD actually took over the district in terms of approving all of the expenditures and the, the finances. One of the things that is not commonly known, the, we actually are, the paychecks that we issue to employees are not actual paychecks. They're warrants, they're promised to pay. So there have been situations in the state. It does not happen often and I would in no way, it's, it's a bad deal. But you actually, if you don't have enough money to meet payroll, you issue interest-bearing warrants as a, as a district. What happens is you issue an interest-bearing warrant, which means your employees basically get a promissory note that they can't go to the bank and deposit it because it isn't, it doesn't have any money backing it up, but it starts accruing interest. So once you do get solvent again, you pay the back wages plus the interest that is accrued on the, on the warrants. So it's a terrible situation. I haven't heard of it happening for a lot of years. It is not something that, that is, something that's even, should be considered in terms of, of running that close to a, a budget that's that close to the vest that you would even be possible of getting into that, that type of a situation.
Well, I, I, I would have to agree with Melinda and Leanne that at this point, there is certainly no guarantee that our levy is going to pass. I mean, I'm, I'm hoping against hope that it's going to pass, but there is certainly no guarantee. And, and we're in a, you know, terrible situation to be trying to pass a levy in a pandemic. So I, I think the first budget is one we have to go. I have concerns about completely depleting. And I realize maybe we wouldn't do that necessarily, but depleting our fund balance where we have nothing in reserve, that's, that's concerning.
Yeah.
Well, that, that four-year thing is only if we kept absolute status quo, meaning our expenditure-
Yeah, understood.
Income was a thing, which anybody with half of a brain would know that a four-year plan like that is not going to be reality whether we are in good times or in bad times. Because every year, things change. So the point that it even was a big topic of conversation saying, oh, look what's going to happen in four years, making it sound like we knew exactly what was going to happen and we were going to do status quo for four years, it's kind of silly and it's ridiculous anyway, but it's something that the state requires us to do. So.
And do those, those projections have-
Negative, negative numbers because we can't. But it's still kind of how ugly it would be if we just maintain the status quo. We've got to go lower than the status quo if we don't pass our levies.
And that projection has built-in formulas, correct? Is, is this, is that correct?
Yes.
It has built-in formulas that we can't alter. And so we're showing increases that may not be reality, but they're built into that budget projection.
It's a, it's just a planning tool.
Yeah.
It's just a planning, it's not a reality.
Understood. It's just, we've had it thrown back at us a time or two, even though it's a planning tool and it's got things built into it that we have no control over. It's still, I guess, worth mentioning from my standpoint. Kevin and Jesse, comments?
I'm kind of, you know, it's six of one, half a dozen of the other, just because it really is not reality. Like you guys are saying, it's, it's a planning tool, but there's no way we're going to go into the negative. That, that, that's not an option. So, um, I mean, I, I agree, we don't know that the levy is going to pass. So I think the upper option is probably the one to go with. But again, I, I hate to have it thrown back in our face because, you know, in that regard, it looks like we're irresponsible in our budgeting, but it's not because it's just a projection tool. It's a hoop we have to jump through.
Yeah, that's true. I like what Melinda said. It's, you know, the, the levy hasn't, we don't know what's going to happen. And I would rather tell the truth than not, you know, let them see what it looks like.
Is there anything you could put on it saying that legally we can't go to a negative ending fund balance? That this would not, in reality, happen?
Well, I think it's, it, what it is, it, it shows the extent of the cuts that would have to be made to keep the district solvent. And maybe that's some, some type of disclaimer to that regard. I mean, you know, four years out, we're talking about $16 million in cuts. That's pretty severe.
Given our assumptions, that probably won't actually be true. But that's, yeah, good point. And we'll, we'll write a little narrative to, to go along with it.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we'll use the, we'll use the first, the first model. And I appreciate your input with that. And please- And please email me as you go through your review and I will do my best to answer your questions.
Yeah, and I I was just going to say that, you know, there probably are those who will say this is scare tactics, but it's really not. It's just the reality of what the finances look like without a levy. And I think we have to be realistic about that. And there there is a real chance that we won't have a levy pass. And so if we don't, this is what we're going to be faced with. And it's it is what it is.
It and you know, and the the way the the status of the the school funding in the state of Washington right now, the levy is still a very large key component of it.
Yeah, understood.
The the way the the system is set up, it's we are dependent on it.
Which is not how it's supposed to be.
Yeah.
Not what we were supposed to be doing. The legislatures were supposed to fix it.
All right. Well, on that happy note, we will move to item five point oh four, update on the levy information campaign. And so I'm going to call on Dr. Quinn to provide us with the update.
And in what like the other items, this is just kind of a regular topic these days on our board meetings until we get to November. I'll just mention a couple of things that we're working on. We've updated our one-page information sheet to incorporate feedback that we got from staff. We sent I sent that out a couple of weeks ago. We're developing some short informational pieces that our principals can put in their newsletters. We can use in our social media posts. We're launching a voter registration campaign. We're reaching out to Children of the Setting Sun Productions, who had agreed before the stay-at-home order to help us create an an informational video. And then I guess the biggest new news is that, starting this week, we're going to be doing a weekly same time, same every week, Facebook Live COVID nineteen-style program on Thursdays at four o'clock. It won't always be about the levy. It will be about, we just think people are more in more interested in information about the district now than ever, because it's not same old, same old. And so the first one will be this Thursday at four o'clock. When I say Facebook Live COVID style, it's we're going to use this webinar format, but then stream it rather than have a whole bunch of people in a room for a Facebook Live. So I think Erin and Mark have gotten that figured out. And that's that's really all I have to share tonight for the update on the levy information campaign. Ninety-eight days.
Ninety-eight days, okay. All right, so any other questions on this topic? Okay, so we'll move on to item five point oh five, discussion for the addition of a land acknowledgement at board meetings. And this is something that we have discussed off and on, not very formally, but at least among ourselves, the the idea of having a land acknowledgement that is read at the start of our meeting and acknowledging where we are and why we're here. And so I'm going to open it up for discussion. Dr. Quinn, I don't know if you have any comments that you want to make, but I I would say I I think it's a the appropriate thing for us to have, and I and I like that idea. And I have some examples that I can share once we decide what to do with them.
And I shared, and I realize I forgot to attach it last night, but I did post on tonight's agenda a a piece that Leanne shared with me that's from the U.S. government that talks about land acknowledgement. And then the other, I shared a link in my letter to you this week about Western's land acknowledgement, which is close by. I also think that this is a great discussion to have. But before we finalize anything, we would want to talk to our colleagues in the Lummy Nation.
Certainly.
Have it. But no, I'm just, I would be happy to take direction if you want me to do some research and work with Jesse or however you want that to go. If you're ready to do that, if you I don't know where you are.
I think this is a fantastic idea. I think just like how Treaty Day got conversation in our community about our lemming neighbors and the promises that we made and the promises that we should keep. I think that doing a land acknowledgement before each of our meetings is also a way to open up to learning, to things that maybe we haven't learned before and need to know. I think it's a fantastic thing. And it's been being done by not just Western, but all sorts of meetings throughout our county and the state and the nation. It's it's the right thing for us to do.
So Linda, could you spearhead this? And Jesse, would you be willing to talk with Linda about this?
Yeah.
I would like to be involved too.
Say, yes. We need to talk to the council, the tribal council. We need to get their feedback. So maybe we can set up a meeting of some kind to get their input too. And like the thing said, when you know, you read that list that Linda sent out about how you recognize a tribe and recognize the the whatever, the property or whatever, you know, you have to first of all, learn about your own history. I sent Linda something today about Burndale, Burndale's own history and how that was created and how Lemmy played a piece in that. And you have to know that first. And there's a lot of information that goes behind it. There's some things that they say, and of course, there's some things that don't say. And I let Linda know what, you know, what I know. I don't know everything either, and I'm still learning. But as far as the acknowledgement and all that type of stuff, there's other things behind that besides the landing acknowledgement is, you know, the treatment and the prejudices that have happened in in the past, especially with some of the Burndale kids, you know, Burndale kids now are my age. And now they're all, you know, fifty, sixty or whatever. I could think of a couple of people that we should really hear from. You know, if you want to acknowledge land acknowledgement, you got to acknowledge, you know, their past. And and then we can move forward. I don't think you can do one without the other. And I'm sure Lawrence, Mr., the chairman, he would be, you know, really be happy to help. And I know Ted would too, you know, as far as the language goes. And there's yeah, there's a lot of people out here that we could tap into. But you have to learn Burndale's history, not just our history. And there's a lot that goes behind it. And I I, you know, I don't know the answer, but I know I want to be there when all this happens. And I think a lot of people would too.
Jesse, I will, I will call you this week and we'll make a plan. And then Andrew, will Jesse and I will bring something back at the end of August?
Yeah.
Sounds great.
I wish you could do this. I wish you can do this in person. It would make it so much more, you know?
I know.
And it would be so huge.
I I know.
It would, and it would be good. Yeah, that's how I see it.
Well, someday we will, but maybe we'll just get this conversation going. So I'll call Jesse this this coming week or this the next few days. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And I just want to add, Jesse, thank you for bringing up. This is more than just words. This this has meaning. And part of that meaning is that learning that Melinda brought up and that Jesse has brought up. And it's it's understanding. And it's also keeping it at the forefront of the importance of since time immemorial, the Lemmy tribe has been on these lands.
And I also, I also want to say, Linda, that we've got to be really careful too, because of this, what whatever this is that was is going on, happened before. And it is in our midst, because even with the backlash like like that, like Black Lives Matter protests or whatever they want to call them in Burndale, I mean, that's just a little part of it. And now we have this, and this is huge. And this is, you know, community and community. We should be partners. And that type of stuff, we need it to come to the forefront.
Jesse, I think we're
Whatever.
We lost your audio for a minute, Jesse.
Okay, I I'm just saying, you know, we need to be careful moving forward because of the Black Lives Matter, you know, that type of thing. And this is, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. This is huge because it's community and community right here. And, you know, we don't want to take nothing from nobody. And we don't want to do nothing to nobody. We just want to be recognized, and that's about it. We don't want to cause no trouble or none of that. We just, I mean, this whole thing is it's like taking a Band-Aid off. You got to be careful.
Well, thank you. And Linda, thank you for taking this on, adding yet another thing to your list. But we appreciate it, and we'll look forward to hearing back from you in late August. And I'll send you a copy of what I had mentioned before. My church has one posted in Bellingham. And so I I thought it was well done, but I'll send it. We certainly want to include our friends at Lummy Nation. So, all right. So we have one policy to consider this evening. That's policy F six one oh six, which deals with allowable costs for federal programs. Board members have had the opportunity to review this policy in advance. It's also been posted on four docs for public review. So at this time, I'll call on Mr. DeBock to present an overview.
So basically, the policy says we will follow all of the federal rules and state regulations as it pertains to federal money. So federal guidelines are are typically more strict and different thresholds of of spending and and accountability than state money does. So this basically calls out the fact that we acknowledge that we will have sufficient internal controls in place to manage and monitor federal expenditures.
And this is the
I would
Sorry, go ahead.
I would just say that this is not going to change anything that we do.
No.
It is just not been a required policy before, and now it's a legally required policy. We have always followed these. It's a was to send us this and said, this is now, you're now required to have this administrative policy.
Yeah, it changed classifications from not required to required.
So it's, but it will not change our practice because we follow all of those guidelines anyway. This is a formality.
And so this policy falls under your purview, not
It's right. It's ours, but you need to adopt, you need to know that you're adopting it for me to follow.
And what it says is that this is the first reading, but it's also suggesting adoption. I know often we have a first reading and then we come back and adopt the next time. Are we needing to adopt it this time? So this is like the first and second reading?
You don't need to. It's just that it's so non-controversial and it's required. And it just says you'll follow the law, that it's hard for me to imagine what you want to read it a second time for. I mean, you know what I'm saying, Leanne?
I do, I do. I just want to be clear.
Yeah, sometimes we put a policy out so the community can look at it if it's if it's optional. This is not optional. It's not. I mean, you can do whatever you want. We'll be fine if you want, don't want to adopt it until August. But I, there's not much to discuss.
We're checking the box. So we can do it this month or next month.
So at this point, if there are no other questions or if there are questions, please ask. But if there are no other questions, I will entertain a motion to approve the policy or any motion to postpone.
I would say, given what Mark and Linda have said, I would go ahead and move to adopt the administrative policy number F six one zero six as attached here too and made it a part of the minutes, because I don't see any reason to bring it back up.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to adopt or approve policy F six one oh six as attached here too and made a part of the minutes. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Policy is approved. All right, the next is a series of items to represent opportunities for sharing by all the participants on the board meeting. And so I'll start with the student board members. Avneet and Kong.
Avneet, do you have anything to share tonight? You're muted. Okay.
Yeah. There's something really new that I know of going on as of like events and everything. But I just wanted to say thank you to all of you for working hard and making plans and still working during the summer.
Thank you.
Yeah, hi, sorry. It's same for me. There is like, hasn't been any like news because everything still is like undecided. So I don't know about anything yet. And also I want to say thank you for like working hard.
All right, thank you. Now for elected board members sharing. One thing I would like to just open up for conversation is, you know, we've been doing this now for five months. Has it been that long? And our participation on these meetings has been very steady. And it seems like we have gotten a lot of traction with folks wanting to to attend virtually that we never seem to have when we have meetings in person. And so I would like to just open up for a discussion about moving forward and keeping some process in place by which our meetings would be broadcast and recorded for folks to to be able to go back to and watch. And that's just my thought. I'll just open it up for discussion.
Like that would be a great item to put on our next board meeting, so it could be advertised and we could discuss it then. And we might get some public input.
I think I think it'd be great to put it on our next meeting too, to also think about the technology that we might need when we're in person. Each of us having a computer won't work when we're all in the same room. We all know about the feedback that thankfully we didn't have any this time. But, um, yeah, a little bit of technology might be needed.
Other comments or thoughts?
There there are certainly a lot of boards that do record their meetings or that. I personally am looking forward to when we get back in person in the same room, because I think that that makes for a much better meeting. But
Yeah.
I have no no qualms with, you know, recording or something that way.
Oh, yeah, but being in the same room, I think is great. But the the watching the meeting, if you're at home or if you're somebody that lives in Custer and, you know, coming down to the meeting is going to be a forty-five minute to get there and forty-five minute back. And it's just a lot of time commitment for people who are interested, but maybe don't have to be there like we do.
Maybe when there's a, maybe when there's no worries, there's something we can do from home.
Well, we we don't know how long we'll be continuing in this, because right now I I don't think we could have a, even though these rules expire on Friday, we still would not be able to get together as a group of this many people. So I'm thinking that maybe they'll be extended again, but but I I don't have any insight on that. So. Linda, were you going to say something?
Just going to say Just going to say, I've made a note to put it on the agenda as an agenda item at the August business meeting.
Great, thank you. Other sharing?
I want to share, and maybe, I don't know, I'm very proud of my kiddo, who is going to be a junior at Ferndale next year. He decided within the past few weeks that he wanted to learn some computer coding stuff. So he's gone on Khan Academy, and he and a couple of friends from school have been working on this together. And I have a little computer coder programmer in my midst. And so maybe at some point, you know, if we need to broadcast this, I could be like, hey, Owen, put this up something. Just kidding. But it's, it's very, it's fun to see after this, you know, rocky spring, and where's the learning happening? That there's a lot of learning happening, and sometimes it's outside of school and following what your passion is. So, very proud of him.
Good job.
And I won't say his name, because I won't embarrass him.
I got a couple of things.
Okay.
Um, July twenty-third was my twenty-third wedding anniversary.
Congratulations.
But that was good. And I can't remember, last week, I let Linda know, but Candy, you guys all know Candy, her brother passed away. So keep her in your thoughts. That's it.
Anyone else?
I got a couple.
Okay.
I've got a couple of school board-related things.
All right.
So in September, and Kevin is a fan of this, there's always been the Legislative Assembly that we go to for a couple of days and work on legislative positions to bring forward. This year, of course, it will be virtual. And there, I believe there's no cost to it at this time. So while, when it comes to the voting, only one member of the board can vote on positions, we can all attend and listen to what the positions are and hear the discussions. And that, I believe, is September twentieth. And that's going to happen. Before that, on Monday, August tenth, from nine to ten-thirty in the morning, there will be a pre-caucus session for our director area. So we're, so all school districts are in different director areas. Ours is Director Area One, which are the five counties, Watcom, Skagit, San Juan, Island, and Snohomish. And so on Monday, August tenth, there is the pre-caucus meeting, which is a time for us to come together and, and talk about what are some of the issues that are coming forward that we want to highlight and make sure other folks know about when it comes time to vote. And I think also, I'm guessing during this, we'll also have some conversation just about how that General Assembly is going to look. So it's not going to be called a Legislative Assembly this year. It's called a, it's going to, it's called the General Assembly, because also what they've done is they've taken our time, when we're usually together in November at our annual conference, there's a business meeting piece of that, that it's always who gets the short straw goes to business meeting piece, because everybody else wants to go to the other sessions. And they've decided to combine that with the ledge, with the ledge conference. So there will be a general, there will be the business meeting for WASTA and the ledge conference happening at the same time. And I believe, again, there's no cost. It will all be virtual.
The September date that you said, was it a Friday? Is it a weekday?
I believe it's a Friday in general. I think, and Kevin, maybe you can help me, it's usually like a Friday, Saturday, or a Sunday, Friday, Saturday, I think is how they usually run it. Now, whether they'll run it on both days or not this year, I haven't heard that yet. I'll probably, I have my next board meeting with the WASTA board meeting in the second weekend of August. So I'll learn more then.
Can people participate in like the Saturday, but not the weekday? I don't have a lot of vacation time at work, and I can't do it.
Yeah, it makes it tough. I was a little disappointed that the caucus was happening on a weekday in the morning. And I, it's a struggle, because you have to use, you have to use vacation time to participate. So I'm going to push for some change there. I don't know if I'll have any luck. But I feel your pain, Melinda.
Even if it isn't a change in the date, just suggestions of ways that people who have a full-time job can participate would be.
Yep.
Yeah, historically, it's been, the Friday has been sessions and discussion, and then Saturday has been the, all the voting. And if, if they follow with that, then Saturday, you'd be able to watch, but only one person from the board would be able to actually do the voting. And it's always been my wedding anniversary weekend, so.
What a fun way to spend your anniversary.
Yeah, you romantic, you.
Robin and I know how to have a good time.
All right, thank you. Linda, superintendent sharing?
No.
Shared enough?
I've shared enough.
And the exec team, anything to share? All right.
I'm, I'm sorry, Andrew. I've shared enough, but I do have one quick one that I think I need to. The city has approached us, looking for some help, trying to find a place that is large enough for them to hold court. So three to six times a year, they find themselves in a position to actually need to have a jury trial. Their misdemeanors are gross misdemeanors. And they need a space that can, that can socially distance thirty or forty people for their, their proceeding. So they have asked us if we have space that would be able to accommodate them. So we are working with them at this point to see if we can work something out that would allow them to conduct their court proceedings when they need to, while we're under the, our current situation. Okay.
But after COVID, this wouldn't, this wouldn't be something continuing?
Right.
No. No, it's strictly a distancing thing. We, we have a very good relationship with the city, and we try to help each other out when so.
Okay. Any other things to share? All right. So the next item are the consent agendas, and the, this, these are the final items. And the superintendent's consent agenda consists of items delegated to the superintendent for action, but requiring the board's final approval. The board's consent agenda consists of routine items for the board to address. The board has had an opportunity to review all of these items prior to this meeting, and is therefore able to expedite our work by taking action on them as a group, rather than one at a time. Same items are also available for public review on board docs. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve both consent agendas or answer questions.
I will make a motion to approve the superintendent consent agenda and the board consent agenda as attached here too and made a part of the minutes.
All right, it's been moved to approve both the superintendent's consent agenda and the board's consent agenda as attached here too and made a part of the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. We have now reached the end of the agenda for the July twenty-eighth business meeting of the Ferndale School District. So thank you all for your participation, and I hereby declare this meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Bye.